I call this meeting to order of the Bellingham City Council for December 15th, 2014. Just one announcement this evening, City Council will have its 2015 reorganization meeting at 1:00 PM on Monday, January 5th, 2015, in the Mayor's Boardroom. Election of officers and committees will occur at the 7 o'clock meeting in council chambers. And Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Jack Weiss.
Here.
Jean Knudsen.
Here.
Kathy Lehman.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Bornham.
Here.
Michael Illaquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start with our 15-minute public comment period. Got a couple of names here, I'll read them, and if you can come up to the microphone at the front or at the top of the stairs and introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes to speak on any subject you would like to, except what is up for public hearing this evening. And there is one item, amendments to the Bellingham Municipal Code Title 20 and 21 to improve the design review process for new and existing development based on lean process recommendations. So anything that you'd like to speak on for up to three minutes, except for that. And we'll start with Rick Hanem, followed by Matt Petrini and Seth Wilson.
Hi, my name is Rick Hanem, I live here in Bellingham. And tonight I'd like to speak about the HUNTA's waste of public money and general foolishness. Now, what I've noticed, and I'm sure a lot of other people have too, the HUNTA doesn't really have much respect for city taxpayers, nor do they seem to have a sense of responsibility toward them. But it would be good if the HUNTA understood that taxpayers are paying the bill for this bloated fascist city government. It's really pretty easy to find examples of the HUNTA wasting public money. Just last week, I was reading in the Wednesday edition of the Bellingham Tissue Paper Distorter about the new two-year budget by the HUNTA. And I noticed an item for $49,000 to fund a pilot ambassador program. And it also mentioned that this had been promoted by Warden Weiss, which I believe is true, because I know in the past, he's been very excited about this moronic idea. Now, an ambassador program usually means, among other things, you hire some people, give them some uniforms, maybe a cap, they walk around town, and they can answer questions of visitors to our city, travelers, whatever. You know, where, for instance, is the central bus station? They'll point the way down Railroad Avenue. But this is completely unnecessary, because in Bellingham, we have thousands of unpaid friendly ambassadors. You're just average citizens, you're walking around town, they're running shops, maybe a police officer, just go up and ask your question. For instance, where's the nearest Starbucks? And if you're downtown, maybe they say Holly Street and Railroad Avenue. Or they might ask another question, where is the center of stupidity in Bellingham? Well, that's an easy question. That's the HUNTA, they're located at City Hall, right across from the public library. So really, we have plenty of people willing to do this for free, we don't need to waste $49,000 on this. That's $49,000 going straight down the toilet. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Matt Petrini.
I guess this puts me in the awkward position of speaking in appreciation of the HUNTA. And actually with some sympathy to all the real victims of HUNTA's that would probably love to spend $49,000 on an ambassador. Anyway, what I came here to speak tonight was to thank you for all of your work on the Rentals, Health and Safety Initiative. I think it's a really important step forward for our city, and I'm really glad to see that it's moving forward. It looks like a really strong program. I'm also really glad to have Mayor Kelly in charge of this, and that I'm confident that her leadership will help keep costs of it under control. I think she really understands how to budget, and given your experience in the legislature and everything in the past, and the budget that we've seen so far, and I respect that. So I think this is going to be a really important initiative and a really important legacy for all of you, and I'm really glad that it could be coming forward here on Kathy's last day. I think it'll be important to protect the health and safety of our community, which has long been threatened and is increasingly threatened by the lack of safety in our rentals and for our low-income homeowners, provide them with the kind of security that they need to be able to live safely in their homes without the fear that they'll either get sick or that they'll suffer, you know, the potential implications of a fire or something else like that that could seriously threaten their safety. The other aspect of it is that I think it'll give us the data that we've been so badly needing. There's been a lot of talk during this whole process, especially from opponents of this initiative, about whether or not we actually have a problem. And the great thing about an inspection program is that it provides us that information. And having it regularly reviewed, so that we can look in the future and see, you know, is this the right approach to actually address the problem that we do have? You know, is this going too far? Is this not going far enough? I think with that data, we'll be able to make some really informed and good decisions in the future that'll definitely improve the initiative as time goes on. So I really want to thank you for all the work that you've put in. Some of you have been working on this for almost as long as I've been alive. Yeah, sorry, Jean. And so I want to appreciate that as well, because it's not been an easy road to get here for some of the people on the council, but I think it's a huge step forward, and I think all of Bellingham will be better for it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Seth Wilson, followed by Nancy Brahm and Ray Ballwig.
Good evening, Council. Seth Wilson, I'm an attorney at Schmeltz, Setkin &amp; Davis, and I represent Rick and Mary Wilson, who have one of the two annexation proposals in front of the council that was discussed today at the Council of the Hall. And I understand from hearing about that council meeting of the Hall today, that there was some concern with the shape of the annexation proposal, and whether or not that would meet Boundary Review Board muster. And I've done some look at the case law and the statutes behind the process, and wanted to talk just briefly on that. First, the Boundary Review Board looks at not only the city's criteria, but also the criteria under RCW 3693-180, one of which, and probably the criteria that was on the council's mind this afternoon, is preventing irregular, abnormally irregular boundaries. And under the case law, there's a difference between an irregular boundary and an abnormally irregular boundary. You can be irregular and still get through the Boundary View process. The case that discusses that in some detail was Lear v. Walken County's Boundary Review Board, which had to do with the east annexation up in Blaine, which is about a half-mile-wide, two-mile-wide jut off to the east of Blaine. And the court said, yeah, that's an irregular boundary, but it's not abnormally irregular. And I would pose that the addition that Wilson's annexation proposal adds to the other annexation proposal before the city is just that, it might be slightly irregular, but it's not abnormally so. It's a very short length where there's that narrow width of about 100 feet, and then it widens out into the full property. And as you look at the city's map, it's no different than some of the other juts and odd shapes on the edges of the city. So I think it still would meet that Boundary Review Board criteria, in that it's not abnormally irregular. The other important thing is that when the Boundary Review Board examines an annexation proposal, it doesn't have to meet every single criteria. And in fact, it can go against some of the criteria, as long as on balance, it furthers the criterias they're looking at. And a case on that was King County versus the King County Boundary Review Board. They found six of the criteria, of the nine criteria, were implicated. Two were strongly positive, three were neutral, and one was slightly negative. And in that case, the Boundary Review Board approved it over that slightly negative application. And the court upheld that approval and said, yeah, maybe there's a slightly negative implication, but on balance, it's positive and meets our goal. So even if this is slightly abnormally irregular, which I wouldn't grant, it furthers the other goals of using physical boundaries such as highways, creating and preserving logical service areas, and preserving natural neighborhoods and communities, as well as other items addressed in our initial letter supporting this annexation. And another key point here, which I think has been brought to your attention, is that this is really the opportunity to get this extra property in, which is in your UGA, it supports 40% more potential housing unit developments than the other annexation proposal before you. And the goal in the UGA is to further growth and development within the city boundaries. And if this property's not brought in now, it's not going to be brought in in the future, given the existing topography out there. So I would strongly urge you to vote in favor of the Wilson annexation proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Nancy Brahm.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Brahm, I'm a lifetime resident here, and I want to speak about the annexation. And I know that there's two that are very similar. And piggybacking on what Seth says, to me, this is a great opportunity to get some more land. For 25 years as a Realtor, I've watched as the town has grown, you know, towns grow. Some of it we like, some of it we don't like. But you guys have set up, or your counterparts have set up this UGA, it's targeted for growth. You know, we've got two similar ones in front of us. If we're arguing over a boundary, that's for the Boundary Review Board. A couple of things to keep in mind is all these properties front on the Mount Baker Highway. The services are in, there, we talk a lot about affordable housing, I mean, there's not going to be million-dollar homes there. And we have almost no new developable land, we're hemmed in on all ways. Our growth goes to the north, there's no, since it's in the UGA and it goes to the UGA boundary, I see no reason not to support it and let it go through. The notes from staff really didn't differentiate at all between the positive part of it, except this irregular boundary. But keep in mind that the reason it's irregular is because all the properties front on the highway. So I urge you to, you know, get as much property. Our last residential annexation was five years ago, you know, we're just way behind. So I urge you to go for the more inclusive and get us some more land. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Ray Ballwig, followed by Greg Hoffenbacher and Charles Law.
Hi, I'm Ray Ballwig, South Hill, and I'm the president of the Neighborhood Association. We're here to thank the mayor and her staff for introducing a resolution this evening to promote a quiet zone within the city limits of Bellingham. The quiet zone's been a priority for South Hill and Fairhaven over the years. The improvements are needed to implement the quiet zone will make the city safer and improve the quality of life for all residents. We feel it will make visits to Boulevard and downtown parks more enjoyable, as well as improving the environment for developing the waterfront. Train horns were made louder by the Swift Rail Act, but the Federal Railroad Administration has developed a quiet zone rule that allows us to mitigate this noise. Many communities have established them. With the anticipated increase in trains that will travel through Bellingham, we feel a quiet zone will be a great benefit to all the residents and businesses. We hope the council will support the proclamation or resolution and help establish the quiet zone. We understand that this is a large and lengthy effort, and believe that public support and participation can help, perhaps establishing a task force that includes the city, port, and citizens. We appreciate the mayor's effort to make Bellingham an even better place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Greg Hoffenbacher.
Greg Hoffenbacher, my wife and I live on the South Hill neighborhood, and we're here strongly supporting the establishment of a railroad quiet zone, so residents can once again enjoy a peaceful, healthy, prosperous, high-quality-of-life. For many of us on the south side, the increase in train traffic and frequency of loud train horns at night is becoming intolerable. Multiple trains blow their 96 to 110 decibel horns at night, waking up thousands of people in our community. Trains often come through at night and in the early morning hours, both on weekends and weekdays. It's no longer possible to get one night of uninterrupted sleep, or enjoy the little luxuries of having the windows open on warm summer nights, or sleeping in on the weekends. Loud train horns have a very negative impact on the health, safety, quality of life, and economic prosperity of citizens living and working in our long-established neighborhoods near the tracks. The sleep deprivation caused by multiple trains blaring their horns at night can lead to daytime drowsiness, attention deficit, memory lapses, confusion, headaches, and other serious conditions. This can deteriorate health and well-being, potentially leading to accidents, illness, missed work, increased medical costs, and other losses. Obviously, it's very important that everyone gets adequate sleep in order to be healthy, happy, and productive. Property values and property tax revenues are also negatively impacted, as the quality of life decreases for neighborhoods near the tracks and people decide to move away. Please help keep Bellingham livable by working to establish railroad quiet zones. If necessary, please work with other local, state, federal, and industry representatives to adjust laws or finance the changes necessary to make train traffic compatible with livable neighborhoods. The sad irony is that often at night, there is little or no traffic at many railroad crossings, especially in the early morning hours. So the train horns aren't adding to safety, instead they are simply waking up residents over and over every night. Quiet zones and the improved safety gates would also prevent people from driving around the gates, as recently happened in Seattle, causing a fatal collision. Thank you, Mayor Linville, for your leadership on this issue, and thank you, council and city staff, for helping to keep Bellingham a wonderful place to live and work.
Thank you, Greg. Charles Law, followed by Preston Schiller and Yoshi Revell.
Good evening, council members, good evening, mayor. I would first like to acknowledge Coast Salish people and their relationship with the water and the land. As part of the human community, I speak on behalf of water as an intricate part of what they call the life systems. Life systems defined as complex and dynamic communities of plants, animals, bioorganisms, and other beings in their environment, in which human communities and the rest of nature interact as a functional unit. I speak for the right of the water of so-called Fever Creek, to be part of that functional unit. By asking for the removal of culverts, piping, and drainage systems that hamper the natural flow, and allow the creek to evaporate, transpare, condensate, and precipitate, and by way of runoff, collect over watersheds, flow into streams, and reach the sea. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Preston Schiller.
Mayor Linville, esteemed city council members, I would like to, my name is Preston Schiller, I'm a Bellingham resident. I would like to speak in support of the resolution that's being brought forward. I would second the comments that Mr. Ballwig and the previous person who spoke to this made about it. And I think it's a very important resolution, and it's definitely worth city effort and time. My only concern is, and I'm sure it will be addressed in the process, because I'm sure that Public Works will be very sensitive to it, is that the trail crossing at the north end of Boulevard Park not be permanently closed. I think there are alternatives to doing that, and I doubt that that's on the table, but I just wanted to put that out there. I'm sure that this legislation, or it's really not legislation at the federal level per se, it's a regulation, probably has a very interesting and quaint legislative history, and it would be wonderful if someone would look into that and do some research and find out who were the interests that pushed this. I follow a fair number of rail issues, and I wasn't aware that this change was taking place, until I heard it, loud and clear within the last two years, as Mr. Buffett amped up the noise level. There are serious health implications to noise. And some years back, I was faculty in the School of Public Health for many years and paid attention to some of these issues. The Environmental Protection Agency of the United States had started a program about noise and health back in the '70s, under the Carter administration. And Ronald Reagan, whom you may remember, and who cupped his ear quite a bit, canceled that program, as one of the other things. He also, of course, took the solar hot water heater off the top of the White House. And since that time, there's been virtually no research done at the federal level in the United States about the health implications of noise. Fortunately, the German EPA, I don't know the full title of it, has filled that void and has, over several decades, created quite a literature about the health implications of noise. And of course, we know that sleep interruption is a serious problem. So I welcome the resolution, and I welcome the city moving forward on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Preston. Yoshi Revell. And that's the end of our list. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, please do come down at this time and form a line at the doorway.
Hello, my name is Yoshi Revell. Thank you to members of the audience, the TV audience, members of city council, and Madam Mayor, for your attention. First, I'd like to say thank you, Madam President, for your service to the city, and I wish you success in your future endeavors. You're welcome. We label depression, and bipolar, and schizophrenia, and various other things as mental illness. And this is wrong-headed. Depression, bipolar, and schizophrenia are normal reactions to a sick culture. In fact, in some cultures, those who we call the mentally ill are actually viewed as canaries in the coal mine. Those who are labeled depressed, bipolar, schizophrenic are actually telling us, are actually warning us, that there's something wrong with our culture. And rather than shunning them, or shoving medications down their throat, we need to listen to them. We need to say, why is it that there are so many who have mental illnesses in our culture? What is wrong with our culture that creates this? It's not them. People with depression, bipolar, and schizophrenia are the canaries in the coal mine, they're trying to tell us something. Secondly, I'd like to say, money is not wealth. We are hugely misguided when we think money is wealth. In fact, some of my spiritual studies say that money is equated with murder. Now, why would that be? Because our natural inclination is to share with each other. We were born with loving and kind hearts, money prevents that. Money gets in the way of us sharing with each other properly, because we glom onto it, thinking that money is going to save us. It doesn't. It actually creates more harm, because it prevents us with sharing with each other, as we are designed to do, to express the love within our hearts. The third thing I'd like to say is, I support the resolution to reduce the noise. Throughout history, throughout evolution, we did not come up with noise like we experience today. We might hear a thunderclap occasionally, or the roar of waterfalls occasionally, but not nearly the amount of noise that we hear now. And it literally drives us crazy. We're not meant to live in a noisy society like we have today. I thank you again for your attention, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Anyone else would like to speak, please come up and introduce yourself.
Thank you very kindly, and good evening. My name is Marion Bedill. Three quick topics. The first, I will say, I have been very pleased at this council, the gender balance that's present on the council. Lake Watcom, I've been hearing stories and writings about people proposing, because our lake is polluted, that we abandon it and go find a new source of water, build a new reservoir. That doesn't seem very logical to me, clear. It's kind of like the story that I think everybody that has a family here would appreciate, where the kids have been messing up their room, their bedroom so bad, and you tell them to fix it up, and they don't fix it, and so forth. And finally, one day, you get a solution. Ah, that bedroom is so messy, I'm not going to use it anymore. I'm going to lock the door, and hire the contractor, and build a new bedroom on the side of the house to put the kids in, then we'll have a clean bedroom. I don't think that analogy works for our Lake Watcom reservoir. We need to clean up the water and keep it clean. So I would like, would be most pleased if the city staff, mayor, thank you, would issue a statement declaring your opinions and belief on moving the Lake Watcom, correctly, moving the potable water reservoir from someplace else instead of Lake Watcom, so that there's a clear policy statement to the public on that. Back to the more immediate practical things, I've spoken before, I'll say it again. Phosphorus is the principal pollutant, there are several others. It comes down from the lands within the watershed, flows off the properties into the creeks, into the lake, and that's bad, we don't want that. We've already been scolded, we're currently under orders by the Federal Department of Health, whatever they call it, to clean that up as quick as we can. There's been lots of work done, I appreciate it, especially what was called a homeowner in a, what is it, improvement project, encouragement project, something, collecting the water on your property, running it into a proper little treated place, a hole in the ground with rocks and good plants and so forth, I'm oversimplifying, to hold the pollution, the phosphorus, on the property, so it doesn't go away and go into the lake. A lot of work has been done on that. I would like to see more distinct publicity. Go toot your horn, blow the whistle on that, so that other people who haven't done that yet are aware of that as an effective method. Because I'll close with the alternative that I do here, as I attend the planning meetings for the budgets for this kind of a stuff. There's a lot of people, and I probably should announce before I say this, that I am a retired professional civil engineer, working on project design and equipment installation for a public works department. Make a statement about the percentage of phosphorus removal that is effective on these concrete boxes with a little filter screen that gets installed. Some people are saying that's a marvelous solution. I want you to say what those cost and how much phosphorus it protects. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion.
Good evening to the mayor, and the council, and other concerned citizens. My name is Martha Benedict. Sorry I didn't have a chance to do the sign-up sheet.
Okay.
I'm here to tell you how very strongly I oppose the resolutions for an ordinance concerning rental registrations and inspections. I understand that present council and various city departments have, and past council, have spent a great deal of time on this issue. I don't think time spent is an adequate justification for passing any form of this. I was here this afternoon, and a gentleman from Planning Commission presented the statistics that between 85 and 90% of properties to be inspected are expected to pass on first inspection. If we only have a small percentage, the remaining percentage, that are not going to pass, I fail to see why that cannot be adequately managed and responsibly managed using present legislation. And if a tenant has a complaint about an unsafe situation, something that's lacking, then I think that there are adequate measures that are presently in place to take care of that. I read the article in the Herald that said, you know, true, false, unclear, about various parts of the resolution or the possible ordinance. I think that there- I think that there might be some very unpleasant surprises down the road as far as what it's actually going to cost and what it's actually going to cost landlords and tenants. I have not raised rents in the two duplexes that I have. I just have four units, pretty small potatoes. But I have not raised the rents for about four or five years, although my property taxes and my fire insurance and other insurances that I have to carry have gone up significantly. And I have not passed those costs on to my tenants. I value having long-term responsible tenants, and I'm fortunate. But I do keep my rents down. And I can't go on absorbing costs, and my tenants don't want to have their rents raised. I just ask you fervently to consider my viewpoint. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, esteemed council members, citizens. I'm here in support of Proposal Two, the annexation of 163-plus acres. First and foremost, this will allow growth. Moshe Quinn of City of Bellingham stated today that they foreshadowed approximately 100 to 300 new jobs within the development of the industrial property. We see much more growth than that, up to 1,000 new jobs. Also, there's going to be 30-plus acres of beautifully developed parks, estuaries. It's going to really bring this city just more vibrance and just more community and more cohesion. It's a very great proposal, and I appreciate and I fully support it, and I hope that, you know, that more of this growth can really benefit the communities. I know that Proposal Two will, and thank you for your time. Good evening.
Excuse me, sir. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Jeff Ragsdale.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. My name is Patrick Freeland, and I recently read on livability.com that Bellingham was named the number eight city in the nation as far as beer quality. And I think that there's a potential for this to increase a little bit of terrorism. But I think if that were to be the case, that it's pretty important that the city, along with partners in the police and the different campus and retails and bar, kind of develop a coalition to, number one, have a little bit of discourse between the different agencies to really address, you know, alcohol and how it can play into a city. And number two, to really promote just health and human safety. In the previous town I came from, Lafayette, Indiana, we had a campus retail bar coalition that was incredibly effective. We used to have this main event called Grand Prix Weekend, which was kind of, you know, because it was a college town, usually had a lot of alcohol-related arrests. But after just two years of working with a campus retail bar coalition, we managed to get alcohol-related arrests for this weekend to the single digits. So I would really highly recommend, if there's been any discussion, to at least think about it and at the very least, consult with the different university and police agencies. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Patrick? And if there's anyone else, now is your chance to come on down.
My name is Patrick Sickney. I just wanted to thank the council for their support for the rental safety ordinance. It's been a lot of work, a long time in the making, and it's a sensible ordinance to make sure that tenants get protected and at a reasonable cost. So it definitely makes sure that we have the safety, health standards up where they need to be. So I just wanted to thank the council for the work on making sure that it gets done.
Thanks, Patrick. Anyone else want to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this, or public comment period of this meeting. And we'll move on to our next item, which is a public hearing. There is one public hearing this evening. Amendments to the Bellingham Municipal Code Titles 20 and 21 to improve the design review process for new and existing development based on lean process recommendations. The subject proposal is to amend the design review process in Bellingham Municipal Codes Titles 20 and 21. The scope of work involves amending the review process by which existing adopted design standards are applied to new development and alterations of existing development. The amendments will implement lean process recommendations that will streamline and standardize the design review process. These amendments will eliminate unnecessary or redundant steps, making the design review process faster, less complex, more understandable, less expensive, and of greater benefit to the citizens of the city of Bellingham. There are no changes to design standards proposed. And Chris Cook is here to present.
And actually, I'm going to have Kurt start off, lead off with the lean process.
Great, welcome, Kirk.
Good evening, Planning and Community Development Department, Kurt Abelfeld. After hearing that, Kathy, that was essentially my presentation. Move forward.
Just reading.
No, I guess what I wanted to let you know, tonight's staff is bringing forward some proposed changes to our design review process. We did those using the lean philosophy. Some may ask, what is lean? Lean is a way of evaluating processes to identify value and non-value-added steps. These non-value-added steps are also known as waste. One of the key components of lean is looking at your process through the eyes of the customer. Many times, we create rules and processes of how we think it would be beneficial for us as staff processing things. Lean actually turns that around a little bit and makes you look at it, how you do things, from the eyes of the customer. Lean is also about continuous process improvement. One of the things that happens is we set rules and regulations and we set processes, and then we forget about them. Over time, additional rules and regulations and processes start to accumulate and they actually defer or detract.
That's it, you're out of time.
Sorry. Three minutes. As I was saying, going back and looking at how we do things is really important in making sure that we're always having and creating an efficient review process. As part of the lean philosophy and looking at our development review process, we wanted to break this down into four different stages. The first area would be the land use enablement. That's the design review process or some other land use permitting process that you go through. The second is a pre-application conference phase. Our third phase is the public facilities construction. The public facilities construction is the review process associated with civil drawings such as the extension of sewer and water or streets to support your development. And then the third phase of our lean process was the building permit. That's everything from the time you submit your application, through the review, through the inspection processes, all the way down into the occupancy. So looking at our development review process through the eyes of lean, we wanted to take it from the time you first thought about your project to when you were actually opening your doors of the project. In order to do that, we had to conduct a kaizen event. A kaizen event is a component of the lean philosophy that essentially puts several folks in a room with a bunch of stickies. They completely dissect the process and they spend about three and a half days doing it, hoping to get out a more efficient process in the end. This first step, we looked at our downtown designer view permit application, again with the goal to identify non-value-added steps and develop recommendations for change. As we sat through, we actually identified 39 possible changes to reduce waste in our process. These changes were broken down into kind of operational changes, how we do things, process changes, how we interact with our design review board, and then legislative code changes, changes that actually, we have to amend the code. That tonight is what we're here for, to present you with those changes. I like to show this picture. It's known as a spaghetti diagram. And what it does is it actually shows the many different steps we have to take just in order to take in an application. What you can see is we have our applicant comes in, comes to our permit counter here. We've got planners that come up and talk with the applicant. They go back to their desk to actually implement or create the case in our permit software tracking system. Then they go over to our copier, print out receipts, come back here, send the customer back over to our finance department and out the door. That's part of it. Well, in order just to get the application from the time we take it to their hands, to the planner actually doing the review, there's a whole bunch of other lines and squigglies in here. One of the really great things that we identified as an operational change is how we take in applications. We've actually cut about at least three days off of the review process. So just in changing something that literally took a matter of minutes to do, we've saved three days off of our review process. At the end of our kaizen, we did a report out on the recommendations. We identified, we had to prioritize all of those 39 changes because we couldn't do them all at once. So what you're hearing tonight is those priority changes that we believe will make the biggest impact on the process at this point. We know that will cut at least 30 days from our review process. We cut these days without hampering the public involvement component of it as well. We're actually expanding on the public involvement, which Chris will be reporting out tonight a little bit more. These changes will also increase staff capacity. It allows us to be more efficient in how we do our work from both staff's perspective as well as the customer's perspective. And I think one of the most important things that we actually learned through this event was we had a better understanding from our customers' perspective. Many times, staff, as we're going through our business, we do our business and we don't really think about it from how it impacts others. And this process really led us to understand what we were doing, the value that we were adding, and a lot of non-value that we were adding to this process through the eyes of the customer. I do want to make a comment that tonight, we're not proposing any changes to the development standards themselves. So you'll continue to see the same type of development that you do out there from a design perspective. This is just how we do our business in the process. So now that you know where we've come from, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Cook to get into the details of the specific changes tonight.
Great, thanks, Kurt.
Thank you, Kurt, and good evening. So there was a number of changes that were proposed that came out of this process, as Kurt explained. Some of the higher priority items was to combine what we call our pre-application conference and our design guidance meeting and consolidate them into a single meeting. Another is to evaluate thresholds by which design review is required, whether it requires, whether it's exempt from design review, whether it requires only staff review, or whether it requires review by the design review board or Historic Preservation Commission. Another one is to clarify the intent, and this is the intent of a design guidance meeting. This is the first meeting currently that design review project goes before the design review board with. And this basically, what was identified with this is that the designer view board receives these applications and they're virtually fully vetted. They're a very well-developed design that they see. And what the board wants is a design that's very conceptual at this stage so that they have greater input on what the design will turn out to be and how it will impact adjacent uses and so on and so forth. And then the last item here is a change that was a priority change, that was one of the low-hanging fruit that we could implement right away. And that is, we had been requiring only one meeting with the design review board per month. There's one regularly scheduled meeting per month with the design review board. And what was happening is when an application came in for the design guidance meeting, they would receive their guidance from the board. And then for them to turn around and provide a application for, a formal application for design review for the second meeting, that couldn't be accomplished within a four-week time. So often, the next meeting would be at least two months out, if not three months out. And so what we did is we worked with the design review board and with the board, we amended their charter to where they have two regularly scheduled meetings per month now. And we were able to review projects in a more timely basis. Actually, at this point, I wanted to mention that there was one other low-hanging fruit. It wasn't a priority, but it was low-hanging fruit, and that is an item that came to you with the update of the downtown Bellingham plan. And that was consolidating the design standards, city center design standards into the handbook. They were in two separate places. And so that was just leading to the applicants having some misunderstandings on thinking it was only one set of standards. But with that, we consolidated those into the handbook, thanks to your adoption of that So the existing design review process for urban villages and the city center, there's only projects in a few of the cities, urban villages, that go to the board or commission. And those are the city center, the waterfront, Old Town, the Fountain District, and the Sandwichway Urban Village. And the exception being Fairhaven, only one meeting is required in the Fairhaven Historic District. And for all other design review, we have a Mural Policy Directive stating that if it's, say, for example, multi-family design review in the Barclay neighborhood, it only requires staff review. But the director has the authority to refer that project to the board for guidance if it turns out to be a more complicated project. So I'm going to go over a summary of the proposed changes. Again, I just want to restate what Kurt said, that the proposed changes are to the designer view process, not to the standards. This you have in your packet. It's a bubble chart comparing the existing designer view process and what we're proposing. Basically, what we have here is a two-meeting process that I stated earlier. You have a design guidance meeting with the designer view board, where they provide guidance on the design standards, on what should take place as part of the Seminole for the designer view application. And then there's a design response meeting. And so the main change here is that we have eliminated the design response meeting and made the requirements of the design guidance meeting a little more robust. And so the existing process, the public didn't begin their input until the neighborhood meeting was held after the design guidance meeting. And we actually wouldn't be taking a public comment on a project until they made application for the design response meeting. We have moved that public input up to the design guidance meeting so that the public has earlier ability to comment on a project. And then the design response meeting actually doesn't completely go away. Basically, the job of the designer review board is to provide a recommendation to the planning director. And the proposed changes, the designer review board provides a recommendation to the director. And then the director can refer a project back to the board for a second meeting if necessary, if the guidance wasn't adequately implemented. So just quickly go over the changes. The required reviews by the board and commission are reduced to a single meeting. Gives the project applicants an option to request a pre-application design guidance meeting with the board or commission, whichever is applicable. Gives the planning director authority to refer any project that is subject to staff review to the board or commission for review and recommendation. And so that'd be, for example, a project that is, and again, like the Barclay neighborhood or just in a multifamily zone, that is only subject to staff review. The director can refer that to the board or commission. Last one is it gives the planning director authority to refer any project that is subject to a single review by the board or commission back to the board or commission for review and recommendation. We've revised the thresholds to give the planning director broader discretion to exempt projects from design review. So that if, for example, there's an addition going on to a multifamily building, if the architectural design is consistent with the existing building, then we can exempt it from design review. Currently, there is a $50,000 project valuation threshold for projects that requires a project to go to the designer review board or HPC or Historic Preservation Commission. to go to the Design Review Board or HPC or Historic Preservation Commission. That's been reviewed or replaced with a revised exemption and staff review thresholds. The intent of the design guidance meeting and design response meetings have been clarified. And as I stated earlier, public gets earlier notice of and input into project proposals for urban villages. Some other changes, the design review process was redrafted to be more standardized and intuitive. Maps were added for each of the design review districts. Currently, all the districts don't have a map right now. Public notes procedures and the process chapter were updated to be consistent with the changes in the design review chapter. And there were some non-substantive changes, formatting changes, for the planning commission in the process chapter. And that was just necessary because there was one section that included the Design Review Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Planning Commission, and Planning Commission Shoring Committee. And what the requirements were all literally within one paragraph. It was overlapping, very confusing, and so we broke that out to be easier to understand. To conclude, the Design Review Board has reviewed these changes and they recommend approval. That is attachment five in the packet. We did not take this to the Historic Preservation Commission because they currently use this process in Fairhaven. This is similar to the process that was adopted for Fairhaven with the update of the Fairhaven Neighborhood Plan and their design review process. And so basically, the process works. It's in, it's being used now. It does work. Planning Commission reviewed this and recommended approval with minor modifications. Those modifications are limited to just moving, reordering some sections. There's no substantive changes that they're proposing. So that concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions.
Great, thanks Chris. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Michael?
Thank you Kathy. I think Mr. Nappel's question for you. In the kaizen process, who is considered the customer? These regulations are designed to protect the public interest, but the public isn't. Who's the customer?
Sure, great question. The customer in this, in this event, is actually the applicant, the one who submits it. We have to look at how we're processing that. The rules and regulations, which we're not changing, are kind of the bigger policy directive of where the community at large comes into play in helping draft those policies and those rules and regulations. The general public is definitely a stakeholder, but the customer is actually the applicant at this point.
Great, Terry?
Yeah. At the beginning, it was stated about the proposed changes are to design review process, but not to design standards. But under the summary of main changes, there's a bullet point that says revise thresholds, give planning director broader discretion to exempt projects from design review. Well exemption from the process is a change in design standards because they don't have to comply to them. What are those thresholds? Is that, because that can make a big difference? Because it is a change to the design standards when you're saying they don't have to comply to them, with them at all.
Sure, and that's actually not what we're saying. What happens when an applicant...
That's what it sounded like.
Yeah, exactly. I'll clarify that for you, thank you. What it does is throughout our design review process, whether it be in an urban village, the Fairhaven District, the downtown core, or just our standard multifamily, over time, as we've created these rules and regulations, we've learned from our past mistakes and we've made our processes better and better. And as Chris mentioned, what the changes that we're trying to do here are actually the changes that we've implemented in our Fairhaven design review process that have worked better. We're trying to apply those benefits and improve process overall to our entire area. What we found in many times is that the, take for example, a small addition came on to a building. What we found was that they were designing it to be exactly compatible with the architectural characteristics of the existing building, and we would have to take that, we would have to take that through this process. We would go to our Design Review Board, and the Design Review Board would say, "Well, it looks exactly like the building. Why are we here?" And unfortunately, we couldn't apply those exemptions. And what those exemption thresholds, doesn't say that you don't have to comply with it. What it does is it allows the director to determine that the proposed change is consistent with the architectural compatibility of the building. So if it's consistent, you're exempt, you don't have to go through the process. If it's not consistent, you're not exempt, you do have to go through the process.
Okay, that makes sense. I was just reading it, it just sounded like, huh. Yep, thanks.
Michael?
In the packet here are exhibits A and B, and they're not written in legislative format. Am I to assume that that's entirely new text, those two exhibits? It's basically the meat of the ordinance. I'm just wondering if how, if this is all new?
This is, well, basically what happened is there were so many changes that it wasn't comprehen, you couldn't comprehend. So basically, we started from scratch. Repeal the old and adopt new. That's it.
Okay, any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing? Seeing none. Has anyone signed up?
There is nobody signed up.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Great, if so, come on down and form a line at the door, please.
Yeah, Matt Petrini. I'm the Clean Energy Program Manager for Resources for Sustainable Communities. I'm sorry for not signing up, I couldn't find the sheet. I think I was confused. Anyway, I want to speak to this really briefly. I think it's important to take a really close look at this. I think a lean process makes a lot of sense. A lot of the changes that have been recommended make a lot of sense. Having public input early in the process is a really logical thing. Clarifying intent for developers makes a lot of sense so that they don't come with a design all the way done and have to go back through this process and change everything. It's some really logical suggestions, and I think it really makes sense to move forward with them. Also, I think making the process simpler is going to help a lot with compliance. If developers feel that it's not an incredibly onerous process that they're going through, structure that they're having to comply with, they're just more likely to do what the city ultimately needs and wants. The only concerns I have have to deal with the thoroughness of the process itself. Design review is a really important thing to the city. It helps us a lot with managing growth in a way that is kind of existential. Neighborhoods are often asked to accept a lot of infill, increased density, as a result of our priorities, to preserve farm and resource land for future generations. And it's a lot easier for them to do that if they feel that the growth that's happening is consistent with the character of their neighborhood, which the design review process is primarily allowed, or designed to require, I guess. And so it's important to have this process be something where there's a lot of opportunity for the public to weigh in, and also that it actually works in achieving development that's consistent with the existing character of the neighborhood. And before kind of moving forward with it, I would like to encourage the council to look at the proceedings of the design review process that's happened so far and see how that goes and where the key public input opportunities are, where the key changes are made. And also to go and look at the properties that have gone through the process versus the properties that haven't. We have a lot of great examples of that in the city. The CM neighborhood is a pretty good example of it. There's a number of properties there where you can tell that the neighborhood character has really been advanced by this process. So keeping it thorough in a way that we can ensure that good development is happening is really important. Nothing in these changes necessarily get rid of that. I am a little bit nervous about potentially not having a second meeting to review it, but possibly if there's public input earlier on, it might alleviate the need for that. But just please make sure to keep a close eye on this one because it's something that definitely could impact the quality of our life in our city in a way that's sort of unexpected. So thanks a lot for your hard work on this. This is really good work that you're doing, and I appreciate the work of the council in taking a close look at reviewing this. Thank you.
Thanks Matt. Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, close public hearing and turn to council. What are your wishes? Michael?
I think it's an excellent improvement, especially I appreciate the chance for public input earlier and then a lot of the other simplifications. But I do have two small questions and hopefully clarifications in exhibit A and exhibit B. And that can be getting rid of. I think this thing may be pretty good, I think. In, on pages 15 and 18 in exhibit A, in two places, it refers to the best design.
What page are you on, Mike?
In the packet, page 15, you'll see one example at the very bottom of that page. The Historic Preservation Commission and/or the director shall apply the standards that result in the best design based on the context of the area. I'm just wondering if best isn't kind of ambiguous. Best in what way? You know, I mean, usually we indicate the outcomes are to be achieved. Is there some other place in the document that makes it clear what best means in this context? And then it occurs later on, on page 18 again, where it says, "Apply the standard that results in the best design based on the context in the area." And that just seems not tight enough. Is it tighter somewhere else?
It is not, and that is language that we are not changing. That is the language that we have carried over from what is currently in place.
Do you think that's the best language?
Nope.
At this time.
I think there's different ways of meeting the standard. The way that they're set up, we've got guidelines and standards, and there's different approaches to meeting the standard. And so what this does is it allows us to ensure that we really are getting the best design component that meets that standard or that guideline. It has definitely worked for us in the past. I don't, at this point, don't believe that it needs a change there.
Okay, so if you read best in the context of the standards, then it's clear what best means?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing had to do with, on page 25 in exhibit B, and it refers to 1A sub 2, "Public comment relative application shall be considered, et cetera." It doesn't make it clear whether that's written comment, verbal comment, if those are treated differently. For example, we often accept written comment over a long period of time, but verbal comment only during the meeting. Is that clarified anywhere about whether it's written or verbal and when it may be received?
In this case, the board's purview is the design of the building. And what happens often at these meetings is people start talking about everything but design. They talk about the transportation impacts, talk about stormwater impacts, and the board has the discretion to focus those comments, ask that those comments be focused on the design of the project.
So this sentence is really all about the relevancy of the comment. But read in context with this and other procedures, is it clear that that comment can be written or verbal as long as it's relevant?
It is. We use, when we prepare staff reports to go to the Design Review Board, we include all of the public comment at that point. It's, we definitely, just as proceedings for the council meeting, we do include public comment that we've received, both at the hearings as well as things that have been submitted, written for them, so.
Terry and then Roxanne?
Yes, I would move approval of the ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roxanne?
I just wanted to make a joke. Would you accept smoke signals also?
Pinky?
I just wanted to commend the planning staff for being open to participate in a lean manufacturing. In my previous life as a project manager, I participated in a week-long kaizen event, and that methodology changed me for the rest of my life. Everything I do makes me think more systematically because of it, and I know there will be more improvements to come. I know as a council member, we get a lot of feedback on planning and the process. And I think this shows that we are responding to our citizens and that we are willing and looking for change, and we are looking for more efficiency. So I think this is a great step forward for us as the city. Thank you.
And Roxanne?
And I wanted to add on and support what Pinky said because this may seem really boring to a lot of you, but this is going to affect how we can attract housing, how we can attract businesses, how we can help small businesses expand. So I'm just really supportive of this, and I thank you for this work.
Great. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, mayor?
We've leaned you out of this one. That's one of them.
My big deal, and you leaned me out? Oh no. I just want to give the staff a compliment. The directors went through a quality improvement exercise over a year ago, and at that point in time, there were two directors who volunteered to start going through the kaizen event. And I really think that what's come out of planning is a great step forward in just making sure we maximize our staff time. But I want to say, sometimes when you've worked with the city for a long time, it's hard to decide that you want, that we can do it differently. And our staff has been so flexible and so focused on quality and getting things done right, that I just wanted publicly to be able to say, they deserve a lot of credit for taking this on. It's not easy. And so, thank you guys.
Great, thank you mayor. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve these amendments to Bellingham Municipal Code titles 20 and 21 to improve the design review process for new and existing development based on lean process recommendations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move into committee reports from this afternoon, starting with Public Works Public Safety with Terry Bornham and Chair.
Thank you Kathy. We had one item before our committee today. It was Northwest Youth Services lease with the federal building. Northwest Youth Services is in need of temporary office space. There is currently space available in the former federal building consisting of the third-floor office suite that was recently vacated by the Bellingham Public Development Authority. The space is approximately 515 square feet. The proposed lease is for 24 months. In recognition of the substantial public benefits provided by Northwest Youth Services, the lease does not require the Northwest Youth Services to pay any rent or security deposit, but does require the Northwest Youth Service to provide their own custodial service. Pursuant to section 4.88.015B1 and 5 of the Bellingham Municipal Code, leasing space in the former federal building for below-market rate requires council approval. Therefore, this proposal was brought forward for council decision. What this is going to do, it's going to allow Northwest Youth Services to move some of their administrative offices over from their regular building. And this will allow that space to be used for a youth drop-in center. So really important, I think, a very important service that they offer to the youth in their community, particularly homeless youth, in terms of providing a place for them to be during the day, to check in, to have somebody to come in and check in with. This was one of the areas that was recommended in the downtown neighborhood, the downtown plan. The committee recommended approval, and I so moved.
Second.
Sorry, was there a second?
Second, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 7-0. End of committee? Terry?
Yep, yes, I'm sorry. End of committee.
Thank you. Okay, next up is planning with Jack Weiss, Chair.
Thank you Kathy. This afternoon, we had one item. It was the extension of an emergency interim ordinance, I'm sorry, interim zoning related to the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and in collective gardens. On June 23rd, 2014, the city council renewed an emergency ordinance and interim zoning regarding land use regulations related to... regarding land use regulations related to the cultivation of medical marijuana for personal use and in collective gardens. The emergency interim ordinance expires on December 31st, 2014. Due to conflicting regulations between medical and recreational marijuana, the possibility of near-future state legislation action, as well as the recent decision on medical marijuana from the Court of Appeals, the staff recommended extending the emergency interim regulations related to medical marijuana. The six-month extension will allow the city to preserve the status quo while these conflicts are resolved and to develop regulations related to medical marijuana. Beyond that description, the staff presented to the committee additional points. One is that this is an emergency ordinance that's being proposed to us. It requires a minimum of five council members voting affirmatively in order for it to pass. If it does pass, then we would have a public hearing within 60 days, although we may end up having it even sooner than that, maybe next month. And finally, that because the state legislation action will probably take a while and other facets of getting everything together, that we most likely will require another six-month extension, starting in July 1st of next year. So with that said, the committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
End of committee.
Thank you. This afternoon, we held executive session before committee of the whole. We had one item. It was potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. It was information only, and no action was taken. We then moved into committee of the whole and had three items. The first was a resolution of the City of Bellingham, Washington, supporting the establishment of railroad quiet zones within city limits. Excuse me. The motion carried in committee seven zero. And I'm gonna just read this, because there's been a lot of interest. Mayor Kelly Linville has asked staff to prepare a formal request to the Federal Railway Administration to establish a quiet zone within the city limits. The establishment of a quiet zone requires improvements to at-grade crossings and will allow trains to decrease the use of their horn while traveling through the city. The city completed a quiet zone study in 2007, which identified two separate quiet zones in Bellingham, the Fairhaven Quiet Zone and the Waterfront Quiet Zone. And again, in committee, it carried this afternoon seven zero, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion of this item? Michael?
I just want to say that I think I, the rest of the council, I'm very much in support of improving the safety crossings, but I think everyone remains concerned with the cost, and this certainly is not a commitment to us to spend the estimated five to six million, not on our own. I don't think that's in anyone's thinking at the moment. So this is not a commitment to spend that money. Personally, I don't think, as important as I think it is, it doesn't merit that much money, given our other priorities. So hopefully, there are ways to fund it that don't require all Bellingham funds.
Yes, thank you for reiterating that. I'll do it also. This is not a commitment to spend that, all that money. Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next up, we had consideration of two petitions for annexation of properties in the city's northern UGA. Proposal one was Mount Baker Highway annexation of 188.6 acres. Proposal two was East Baker View Road and Mount Baker Highway annexation of 163.5 acres. We had a motion and a second to recommend approval of proposal two. The motion carried seven zero, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Terry?
Yeah, I just want to repeat a couple of things that I'd said this morning about why I'm supporting this, this proposal over the other proposal. Part of it, it came up, you know, about, about the boundary review board, the irregular, irregular shape of it. But for me, that's, that's one of the considerations of how it is. But if you look at how the, the second one is proposed and where the boundary lines are for it, it just, it, for me, it provides a much more, a boundary that enables much more efficient delivery of, of our services to that area than what the other one, which also reduces our cost in terms of delivering those services and in terms of a cost ratio. When you look at this one compared to the other one, this is, is also financial consideration of why I'm supporting that. So I just want to make sure that's on the record of, you know, why, why this one and not necessarily the other one.
Thank you, Terry. Anyone else? Pinky?
I, I too would like the opportunity to reiterate what happened in committee. I walked in this morning thinking I was voting for proposal one, and after my understanding of the legislation process of how these things get reviewed and how we move forward, I now understand that the options are one or two, being that one could be denied completely because the review board does not like all of the pieces that are in the puzzle. And I would rather have the bigger puzzle be approved, because we do need to do some annexation, we do need to bring more property into the city. So I would rather vote for, for two, meaning that we will at least get something versus nothing. And that's why I changed my vote.
Thanks, Pinky. Anyone else? Michael?
I, I agree with you, Pinky. I, I'd rather go for the sure thing. The, the properties being left out with the smaller annexation, it'd be great. It'd be really great to have that additional capacity in the city limits, but the piece of property is just in the wrong place. And it's clear the applicants had to do some pretty fancy maneuvers to include property of people who are opposed to the annexation as a neck to get out to their property. I think that's just the sort of thing that raises a risk the boundary review board will say no, and if they do, we lose it all. I'd rather go for the sure thing and get the 85%. I, I would say the person who talked about supporting the annexation, particularly because of the industrial land, the good news there is, the industrial land portion is included even in the smaller annexation, and I agree with him. That's really important. And I hope he's right. I hope there's more than 300 jobs that come out of that.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving proposal two, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Peter?
One thing to make clear is that there is a resolution in your packet, and so you are actually passing
Resolution.
The resolution.
Okay. Let me make sure. Do you know what?
It's on page 171.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Okay, let's do that again. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of proposal two with the resolution accepting a petition for annexation of properties within Bellingham's northern urban growth area within the Dewey Valley Planning Area to the City of Bellingham and initiating the annexation review process.
Correct. And that, the, the main thing to point out there is that it's set up in the alternative on page 172, and, and you would be deleting proposal one and
Okay.
Just be proposal two.
Great, so amended to say proposal two. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, thank you very much. Third item from committee of the whole this afternoon was a rental housing registration program work session. Gene moved, and Terry seconded, a recommendation to approve the ordinance with some amendments for first and second reading, and for it to come back for third and final when staff has more answers, including the fee schedule, and that an August 1st start date for the registration component be set, and that the language, that the added language on page 182, the first paragraph of Section 6.15.040, Section B, be eliminated. And I'll draw folks' attention to a sheet here we have with the amendments in red. Is there anything you, we need to add, Peter?
No, I would just, you've already read the, the first two into the record. I would just say that the, I believe it was the council, the, the committee of the whole recommendation with respect to 6.15.040G to insert invisible location after the word unit.
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no objection, that is our understanding as well. Okay. This afternoon, motion, that motion carried seven zero, so I so move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Jack and then Michael?
I have a statement that I'd like to read in support of, of this ordinance. Rental safety has been an issue in Bellingham for a very long time. Personally, I've worked on, with many other people over the last six years to keep this issue in the forefront, instead of having it relegated to the waste bin of good ideas. The ordinance before us is about fairness, fairness to tenants, good property owners, and the surrounding neighborhood. It is fair to all tenants, whether they are low-income and unable to get satisfaction when a water heater breaks, or there is an electrical hazard, or that they are moderate income and unable to get a property owner to fix doors and windows that are not properly weatherized and leaking cold air like a sieve, or that they're a student and unaware of the technical requirements R for egress in case of fire. The ordinance is fair to property owners who do good property management. By requiring minimal, minimum health and safety standards for our rental housing stock, every property owner is on a level playing field. This means that they can charge a fair rent, knowing that some bad apple down the street will not match or undercut them with uninhabitable, unsafe, and expensive place. Consistent expectation of health and safety standards in the program's educational component will also translate, for the most part, into better care of, of units by tenants and a corresponding savings to the property owner. And this ordinance is fair to the surrounding neighborhoods where the rental property exists. Better-kept rental properties improve the entire character of the neighborhood and create fewer health and safety nuisances. And an improved neighborhood means increased property values for nearby homeowners and for neighboring, neighboring rental property owners. This ordinance has a wide backing of supporters from neighborhood groups, to nonprofit service organizations, to some property owners, and to, of course, tenants. The ordinance also has its fair share of initial detractors. As I listen to their concerns, I see much of their criticisms based on misinformation or just fear. The article in the Herald this past weekend dispelled some of the issues that have been misrepresented. City staff has done a good job lately of correcting other false allegations of what this program is or isn't. I am certain that materials that we will publish prior to the start of the program will show that if you're doing a good job in managing your rental property, the impacts to your business will be minimal. The bottom line is that this rental safety ordinance is a well-measured tool that will help remediate health and safety problems that we have in our rental housing stock. Furthermore, the city will be able to gather additional information such as rental numbers and the conditions as we correctly classify the rental industry as a business. This information will be valuable for city planning, as well as interested tenants and neighbors. I appreciate the hundreds and hundreds of comments we have received over the years as we come to this vote. Some comments on both sides of the issue were exceptionally well-presented and heartfelt and added to the conversation. I was disappointed with a small minority of comments from property owners that seemed to think that all of the problems we, we have stem from tenants and their lack of hygiene. Remember, while housekeeping skills may vary, poor habits may be found in renters and owners alike across all ages and classes. Tenants are valuable members of our community and are essential contribution to the rental industry itself. My hope is that the tenor of our relationships and communications will improve as this ordinance is implemented. I was pleased to hear this afternoon that the goals of the council set out at the start of this process are being met. We are effectively and efficiently dealing with health and safety issues and doing so with minimal cost to the property owner. I trust that most will look at this program as a sound investment through protecting their business and not an excuse to arbitrarily increase rents well beyond the small cost of the rental safety program. Finally, I would like to thank our staff and mayor for their amazing work that they have done in getting us to this point, and for the work that they will do in the future to get us started. I also want to thank the scores of people who believed in doing the right thing for the approximately 45,000 tenants we have in Bellingham, and for the thousands of good property owners that will also benefit from our actions.
Thank you, Jack Wilson. Michael and then Terry?
I'm happy that we've gotten this far, and I think it's an improved end product. I, I do think that we left some things out. For example, this afternoon, I said there's an important exemption for someone who lives in a house and rents it out for a year or less and then moves back in. That's not exempt, and it's, the, the planning director can't make that exemption by administration because it's not written to the code. I wish that was in there, but that's not enough to reason to vote against it. I agree with what Jack said, that a lot of the misunderstandings and objections were, were based on misunderstanding, and that creates uncertainty, because there's a vacuum of information. I kind of wanted more of the program laid out before we approve the ordinance, but again, that's not going to be a reason to vote against it. We're still going to have to have come forward the precise fee structure and the precise incentives. The checklist for the health and safety items is actually not finalized yet, and the actual information that needs to be provided at registration is also not known. Those will all be determined by an administrative process. And my assurance is that all of those things will be made available before we give final approval of this program and well before the program actually takes effect. So I would have preferred that information to be available ahead of time to kind of tamp down any uncertainties that may come in, but we will be there in the end. And I just want to say one last thing. Even if the failure rate is as small, or 10 to 15%, given the fact that more than half of all residents live in rentals, that's still hundreds of households living in legally unsafe conditions. And that's enough of a health and safety problem for me that we should take some action.
Thank you, Michael. Terry and then Roxanne?
Yeah, I'm really glad we're at this point. I think it was 14 years ago, 15 years ago, Barbara Ryan and I first started working on this and brought, brought the first additions of this forward. And we went through a lot of battles during that time to move this forward, and it went dormant at different times. And I want to really thank Jack Weiss for picking up the ball here and has been working on it for the last six years and made a lot of different changes. Especially want to thank the students and young renters that came forward to share their stories, and the neighborhood representatives who have come forward in support of this ordinance this time, because it's, it's, it's hard moving forward on this, on these kind of items. And there has been a lot of support from a lot of different areas to bring this where it is today. I want to thank the staff, because there's been, and the mayor, for getting behind this and, and putting in the work to give us the product that's before us today, because I think right now, it's at a very good form, and I will definitely vote yes for this, so thank everyone for all the hard work on it.
Thanks, Terry. Roxanne and then Gene?
Well, I just wanted to say that I support absolutely everyone who provided input to this. I'm happy to support the people that wanted this program. That's why you're getting my yes vote. But I'm also happy to support the people that were against this, because that's what's going to create the scrutinizing eye to make sure that this program is the right size and the right fit for the problem. So I don't want anyone to think that they were not heard during this process. This is going to really help us define the problem and really help us attack it in the right ways. So I thank you all for your input.
Good point. Thanks, Roxanne. Gene?
Yeah, just to echo everything that's been said so far. This has been a long, a long battle, and we're not passing it just because we want to get rid of it. If we wanted to get rid of it, we'd have got rid of it a long time. We'll never brought it back up again.
Right.
But Mr. Weiss refused to let that happen. But the difference, and I'm being serious, the difference is, this time around, we included everybody that was going to be affected by this program in every way possible. And this time, we're getting more buy-in from people. I mean, I've heard from landlords that say, hey, you know what? I think this is a good thing. We have some problems, and it needs to be taken care of. So I don't want anybody to think we're just moving this along because we want to move it along, because that's not the case at all. The mayor and the staff have done a great job, and everybody's bought in. And I, I'm not saying everybody bought in, but it's been a better process this time than it was 14 years ago, when we had a meeting at the ferry terminal, and I felt like jumping in the water a few times that night. I mean, it was, it was a rough meeting. But since that time, it's evolved, and I, and I know Terry's evolved on this, and I have too, because we kind of raised our hands up years ago and said, we don't want to have anything to do with this. But as time went on... But as time went on and as we've heard from other communities and other cities that have done it, we can do it here and do it in a fair way. So I'll support it.
Pinky, do you want to speak? Okay.
Good girl.
Well, shoot, sorry, I got to say something briefly. I'll say something a little different. I'm voting for this and I'm happy to. And I'm really pleased that it's come to the iteration that it has because I feel a lot better about this version than many that we've been discussing over my three years on council and long before that. I would like to also say, I pushed to bring this forward even though in the beginning I was not excited about it. I don't want extra government layers and I don't want extra fees and I don't want endless government processes with ill-defined problems that we're not quite sure what we're trying to fix. We're trying to find out how big the problem is, et cetera. However, we have a larger problem in the city of Bellingham around growth and how we want to tackle that. And this issue of rental safety and quality of life in our neighborhoods has been undermining the quality of the conversation in our community about long-term growth for a very long time. And hopefully, when we pass this and implement it wisely and continue to scrutinize it and make it better and learn more from it over time, that won't be able to undermine our conversation about long-term growth any longer. And I really, I really wish that for this city because we have a bright, bright future and a lot of challenges ahead. And this can be very helpful for us if we let it be. So I'm grateful to everyone who's worked for it. Jack, to you as well for championing this over the years. Mayor Kelly for making sure that it becomes the best version possible from staff, thank you. And to all the folks, especially young folks who have worked for this when they were in school and after school. I'm looking at a couple of people out there. And, and property owners and realtors and builders and neighborhood reps and everybody who's been super involved for a long, long time. This has been a very heated conversation in our community and I do think we've come to a very good resolution. Anything else want to be added? Okay. That being said, we have a motion and a second to approve an ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington relating to residential rental registration, inspection, and code compliance, adding a new chapter, six point one five, to the Bellingham Municipal Code and providing for an effective date of January first, twenty fifteen. The ordinance as written in the packet but amended by council. And we're bringing it forward for first and second with third and final delayed until staff will present the full fiscal and administrative program aspects. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving right along. I think all that's left is old and new business. I didn't have any minutes that I saw. I don't think we have them yet from last time. Okay, is there any old or new business from council members? Pinky and then Terry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Even though this is not our last meeting, it does mark the end of my very first year existing on city council. And I want to say what an extraordinary year it has been. I want to thank all those people who put me in office and I hope you're still proud of the job I'm doing even though I might not agree with you on everything. Just know that I am thoughtful in every decision that I make. I want to thank the staff for being so supportive in my questions and my fumbling through policy. Thank my fellow council members for the opportunity to work together to do the best that we can in our belief for the city. We've had some really tough decisions this year and I want to thank all the citizens who engaged in the political process by sending emails, phone calls, and attending council meetings. And my family who has to compensate for me not being home. I admit, I am still a little nervous, hoping I don't say something stupid while I'm sitting up here. But I have learned so much this year and I am very grateful for it. And I have to say, I love this job. It makes me feel good to be here all the time and I am very grateful for this opportunity. It is an honor and a privilege to serve on the Bellingham City Council. Thank you and happy holidays.
Thanks, Pinky. Anyone else? Old or new business? Terry.
Yeah, I have three items for us under old and new business. The first is I want to present a resolution honoring Kathy Layman for her public service. As most of you know, Kathy will is resigning today after this meeting to take a, a new job. And this is a resolution honoring her for her service. Whereas Bellingham City Council member Kathy Layman has served on the Bellingham City Council since two thousand twelve. And whereas Kathy was elected by her fellow council members to serve as council president in two thousand fourteen. And whereas Kathy has served on the following committees, Finance and Personnel, Lake Watcom and Natural Resources, Planning and Waterfront Downtown Development. And whereas Kathy has served as council liaison to Watcom Council of Governments, Watcom Museum Foundation, Bellingham Sister City Association, and Bellingham School District. And whereas Kathy has taken a strong leadership position on protecting rural lands by advocating for vigorous infill policies in Bellingham. And whereas Kathy's expressive leadership on the council has inspired other young women to get involved in local politics. And whereas Kathy's radiant smile and photogenic face as well as her knack for bringing levity to long meetings and tough topics will be missed by audience members and television viewers. And whereas Kathy's quick wit, thoughtful demeanor, and problem-solving approaches have been greatly valued by Mayor Kelly and the mayor's staff. And whereas Kathy has a passion for social justice, sustainability, and we wish her the best in her professional pursuits of a healthier future for humanity and the earth. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council, by the city council, the city of Bellingham, that the city council hereby expresses its appreciation and honors Kathy Layman for her leadership, public service, dedication to the citizens of the city of Bellingham, and to the wider community. And I so move.
Second.
So I'm, I'm going to override the president here and, and, and take this vote and ask if there are any comments. Roxanne.
Once upon a time, I was a gal who moved to Bellingham and I looked at the Bellingham City Council and thought, gee, I wonder why there's only one woman up there. And then there was this woman that came into my life. She's now to my right and she is the one who encouraged me to do this from the very start. She not only encouraged me, she gave me the courage to do it. The only reason that I'm sitting up here is because of Kathy Layman. And I want to thank you for that and just share that. One of the things that she said is, you know, it'd be really nice if we could get some more girl power up there, but it'd also be nice to just look down and see a friend. And I just want to say, I'm going to miss looking down and seeing you as my friend here.
Thanks, Roxanne.
And while this is our major, major loss here, she has such a great future to gain. And while we may be losing her on the city council, she's going to be doing even bigger work for the whole state of Washington. So I just lift my hands to you and I thank you for everything.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Jean.
Yeah, you know, I say this every time somebody leaves, whether they leave unfortunately because of a personal decision or we've had a couple of council members pass away and a lot of members don't run anymore. We spend a lot of time together and it's like a member of the family leaving, leaving home. And it really is. And, you know, we have a lot of memories, but even though it was only three years, as I told her before, she was a breath of fresh air because before she got up here, it was seven angry guys on this council. And she, that was the truth at that time. And she did bring a lot of fresh air to this place and, and to our now. We have a couple of, a couple of gals to keep us in line. But I just want to say something on a personal note. I've had a lot of situations where I was looking at the possibility because of my health of having to walk away. And I got to tell you, I, I, I really commend you how you're handling this because I wouldn't be handling it this way at all. I'd be a bundle of tears. And, you know, even though I've term limited myself, you would not believe how even that feels after all these years of sitting up here. But it was great to have you up here and I know whatever you're going to do, you're going to do it well. And thank you for your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Obviously Kathy, this is a lot of great sadness for us. Your passion for getting women to step up and be involved in our political future was an integral part of my candidacy for city council. And I thank you for all the personal support and your support on council. But also, I wanted to thank you for your example on council. You, you have shown a lot of courage in being an independent thinker and being willing to step out on a limb for the things that you believe in. And also the huge leap of faith to step up and be chair and, and not be worried about knowing how to do it all perfectly before you get up there. Your willingness to learn, to learn on the job is an example for us that we don't all have to be perfect at everything before we try. And, and you gave us, you, you're giving us the inspiration to take a chance and to take a risk, to try something new. You showed us your vulnerability and your humor and we all learned along the way. You've been an inspiration for others to not let perfection be a hindrance and for showing Bellingham that we are all just doing the best that we can do one day at a time. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
I'm going to, you know, I'm going to miss you a lot in many ways. When I came on the council, we did have, we had, I came on with three strong women on the council. And then we went through a period when it was just guys. And it was really, it was different. And with you coming, coming on, and it wasn't just because you're a woman, it was because of who you are. It's not a matter of just being a woman, but it's being a very bright, confident woman who's, you know, willing to voice her objections to issues or support for issues. And for me to, after losing other people, to be a sounding board at times for issues that I've had, even if we don't agree with, I know I can get a critical listen. And that's important in this process to be able to have somebody to act as a sounding board. And you, you know, for me, you have been that. And I'm going to, I'm going to miss that. And I think your perspective on a lot of, a lot of issues are going to be, are going to be missed. And we wish you well with whatever you're going to do in the future. And I know you'll do it well.
Thank you, Terry.
Yes. Anyone else before we vote? Okay. All those, oh, the mayor.
I know it's not my turn. I've had a, I've had a chance to talk to Kathy, obviously privately before she's leaving. But I just want to echo what everybody said about this and her, about being happy for her. And, and hopefully she won't ignore.
Microphone, please.
Oh. Caught me. That's the way, Dale. Anyway, you all heard what I said. And I just want to make sure that, that you don't forget about us because I know you'll be up here. I told your mom, she probably won't be coming to many council meetings anymore. But she promised she'd watch us on TV. So when you're in town, you need to come and see us and give us, give us your wisdom as you always have. And I will miss you greatly both as a colleague and a friend.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion answer aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes seven zero. And Kathy, I want to give you a little token. Listen, this is Kathy Layman, council president, two thousand fourteen. Thank you for three years of service to the Bellingham City Council, helping to enhance the quality of life for the people and land for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. That's very, very nice. Thank you.
So I have a couple more items after that.
Terry, before you do that, I'm going to say something real short. So you can rest for one second.
I don't want to forget.
I just wanted to say a few short things. And my mom needs to get home to let her dog out, so I'll keep it real short. First, I just, I'll try and keep it together. I want to say thank you to all of those who worked to give me this opportunity. And, oh yeah, mom told me, remember, what you have to say is more important than how you feel if you start thinking you're going to cry. Okay. I didn't prepare anything because I wanted to speak from the heart. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who put their faith in me and gave me this opportunity to serve the citizens of Bellingham. I, I believe very much that the last three years were a culmination of all of my life here since I was twenty and I transferred to Western to finish my degree and thought I would just do that and leave and then didn't. I got sucked into this wonderful place and began working at the Opportunity Council and then Sustainable Connections and Futurewise and many numerous boards and activities and began making friends and getting, this place got its talents in me. And kind of the, the natural conclusion, I think, was to end up here. And I'm just so grateful for everyone who helped me be a part of this community for so long and in so many different ways. I also wanted to explain again exactly why I'm leaving. I really think there is only one reason I would go and that I would resign early and it's for this purpose. Later this week, Governor Inslee will be announcing some proposed legislation to price carbon in the state of Washington. And I have an opportunity to help work on that. And if Washington State can successfully begin to price carbon and factor in climate issues or climate impacts into our local economy in Washington State, we can join with British Columbia and California. And this is also being worked on in Oregon. If we can be successful together, the entire West Coast creates the fifth-largest economy in the world operating under carbon pollution pricing legislation. And one thing I've learned in the city of Bellingham is that the world needs models of what's possible. And I have been a part of many wonderful things that are possible here in this community. And this is a new opportunity I have to be a part of a much larger issue, climate change. And I'm grateful for that, too. It came earlier than I thought and wanted it to, but it came when it did. And so now is the time I have to go pursue it. I wanted to thank the six people up here that I serve with. It's been a deep pleasure. It's more important what I have to say than how I feel. Okay. And Mayor Kelly, tremendous pleasure. I especially want to say that the seven of you are giving me a gift of being able to feel like I can go do this because I'm leaving the city in very good hands. And I appreciate that. So when I came into office, I cared about downtown Bellingham and Lake Watcom and energy issues, growth and transportation issues, waterfront, coal and oil transportation issues, rental registration, economic development, and the business climate. And I do feel like we've made substantial progress on all of those items. Some of them were more overt and in public than others. Some of them were behind the scenes. I've often said the Lake Watcom resolution isn't sexy, but it's really important. The joint resolution we passed with Watcom County and the Lake Watcom Water and Sewer District, it was a real step forward. And there's been some great work in economic development with Mayor Kelly's Business Climate Work Group. And some things are going to come out of that in the next year or two that I know are going to be really tremendous for the city. So I'm very proud of what we've accomplished. I also need to give a little shout out to Stan Snap and Seth Fleetwood, wherever you are. And I really want to thank Marie Marchand and Mark Gardner and Jalen Walker, who served with me before she moved on and up to, up to Western. And Linda, of course. And Peter, city attorney, who also represents city council members. Thank you. There's so many people, I can't name all the names, but you know who you are. I hope you do. I have a personal relationship with so many staff and it's meant a lot. Thank you. So, I guess, I guess the last thing I want to make sure I say is I sincerely hope that my future returns me to Bellingham and that I am given some opportunity to serve you again in whatever capacity it presents itself. And I will try to do so with the work I'm doing. And I will try to do so with the work I'm doing in Seattle, and working for the state legislation over the next few years. With that, I'm done, but I'll just explain that after we've done the consent agenda and passed the budget, I will then be resigning my position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry.
Yes, the next item I have, it relates to filling Kathy's position. On Wednesday, the 17th of December, we will be selecting a new council member. We'll have a meeting at 7:00 here in the council chambers, and the candidates for that position will be coming before us to, to speak. We have, currently, we're down to five candidates. One candidate, Richard Dean Johnson, turns out he lives two streets over, out of the district, so he won't be in the, the pool, so we're down, we have five candidates. One candidate, Andrew Redding, unfortunately, had made, already made commitments to be in Washington DC on Wednesday, so he will not be able to address us, but his, we have his applications, his qualifications, and things before us to consider as we consider that. What I would like to do now, we have put the four remaining candidates, the four candidates who will be speaking, names in this cup, and I want to draw, instead of the order in which they will speak, so that we could, we'll have that out of the way, and everyone knows it's fair, transparent, out in the open, of who speaks first. And so Kathy, if you would do us the honor of drawing, and it'll be the order in which they're drawn, that's how they will address the council. Is, first, is that okay with the council? I should ask. You know, I don't want to do anything improper here. First name.
Scott Barg.
Scott Barg. Speaker number one.
Iris Mountie Gibson.
Speaker number two.
Dan Hamel.
Speaker number three.
We're a good team here, Terry.
Yeah, I know. It's gonna be rough breaking up.
Michelle McGee.
All right. Okay, that is the order in which the candidates will address the council come Wednesday night. And, yeah, just so people know, we'll have the, the candidates address the council, we will retire to executive session, not to make any decisions, but as a personnel matter, to discuss qualifications. We will then come back out, I will then accept nominations from the floor. We will vote on those nominations. The first candidate to reach four votes will be the new council member. If in the first round, we do not have a majority of four, we will go back to the executives and come back out, we'll take new nominations, and we will continue, hopefully till we have selected a city council person. Exciting times. Much easier than how you got in, isn't it Kathy? Okay.
I'll admit that, yes.
The next piece of business is, it's the announcement of the ML, Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. We are, it is coming back to City Hall this year. I announced it this afternoon, but I wanted to put it out there, because we wasn't here last year, and so I wanted to let you know it is coming back. So, the city of Bellingham will be host, hosting the council, let's put it together, 2015 Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration will be on Monday, January 19th, at noon, here at City Hall. The wonderful caution chorus will be again singing. Roxanne Murphy will be the emcee. Speakers will include Mayor Kelly Linville, Edwin Skip Williams, Kristen French, and the poet Ellen Murphy. And encourage people to come out and enjoy.
Very cool.
That's the end of my business.
Okay. Any other, Roxanne? I just wanted to publicly announce that I'm very excited that Judge Raquel Montoya Lewis has been appointed as our fourth Superior Court Judge for Watcom County. This is really exciting for me personally, because she's the judge that works for my tribe. She works for many tribes, she's earned respect of tribal members everywhere, and that's not easy to do as a judge. But she brings, you know, 15 years of experience, she also teaches law courses at Western, and so I just thought she was the really right person for the job, and she is also a native from New Mexico, so I'm excited that we have another female native leader in our county.
Very cool. Thank you, Roxanne. Anyone else, old or new business?
Just my end of the year thanks to council, thanks to you for doing a great job as council president.
Thanks, Jean.
Thanks to the mayor and all the staff and everybody, it's quite a group, it's a great group, we had another great year, and look forward to 2015.
And with that, I do want to thank you, Kathy, for stepping up as chair, because being chair is not an easy job. It might look easy just sitting up there, but it's a very, it is a very tough job, holding it all together and staying on top of everything, so.
Yeah.
Thanks for being willing to do it, and you did a great job.
You made it look easy. I should have known. Thank you, Terry, and Jean, thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other old or new business, we'll move into the mayor's report.
Well, one thing, we have a card that the executive team signed for you, so I'm gonna give that to Peter, and he's gonna give it to Linda, and it will work its way over to you.
Bureaucracy.
I know, I know. If you can, if you can touch it 10 times, why should you just touch it once?
We need a Lean Kaizen process for this card.
And one of our speakers at the public comment period stole my thunder about our new, let's see, recognition, Patrick, about Bellingham being in the top 10 of beer cities, and yes. When he mentioned about the campus group, we have the Campus Coalition, and it does exactly what he was, you know, suggesting, so in case the council thinks we're not paying attention to that, we really are, and we get good participation in that. The planning department sponsored a training on removing barriers for develop, redeveloping historical buildings, which I'm excited about, because I like old things, and including myself. It's getting late.
I thought you were gonna say Will.
I love him too, but, yeah. And there were about 85 people, planning professionals and designers and architects that came to the training, so that's a good thing for our community. Just so the council is aware, we did file condemnation proceedings against a low hotel this morning. We had made an offer to them to purchase the property, and they rejected the offer, so that's the next step. And I have two informational appointments to let you be aware of, actually, three. First is Jeffrey Cook and Don Hilty Jones to the MNAC, that's information only, and Paul Schisler to the Community Development Advisory Board, so those are both information only. And finally, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, happy, happy holidays.
Kwanzaa.
Kwanzaa. Whatever it is. I, I, at some point, yeah, at some point in time, I'd like us all to say what, what, how we celebrate, and all of us to then respond with how we celebrate, because it gets a little teeny bit sterile, and I'll probably get in trouble for that.
That's okay.
And I apologize already, but, you know, that's the wonderful thing about our community is, we have so many people that live here and celebrate this season in so many different ways, so with that.
And maybe just celebrate the solstice.
And the solstice, I love the solstice.
Just say eggnog and rum, and everything will be fine.
And everything's fine. So I will end with happy holidays to everybody, and I hope you have a wonderful holiday season.
Thank you, Mayor Kelly.
And that's it for me. Thank you, thank you all of you for the good work you did this year. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and, and I think we've accomplished a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Give it to Roxanne. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda passes. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 20664, and ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, adopting a transportation impact fee base rate and rate schedule for 2015.
Move third and final.
Second.
Kathy Layman.
Aye.
Michael Illaquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornamond.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Yes.
Ordinance passes seven zero. Agenda Bill 20666, an ordinance relating to the 2014 budget authorizing use of up to $52,000 from a cemetery cash endowed care reserve to make up for revenue shortfalls and cover cemetery operations, operating expenditures in 2014.
Move third and final.
Second.
Michael Illaquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
No.
Terry Bornamond.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Kathy Layman.
Aye.
Ordinance passes six one. Jack Weiss opposed. Agenda Bill 20667, an ordinance to close the Bellingham Public Development Authority Fund. Move third and final.
Second.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornamond.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Kathy Layman.
Aye.
Michael Illaquist.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero. Agenda Bill 20668, an ordinance relating to the 2015-2016 biennial budget of the city of Bellingham, providing for the adoption of such budget pursuant to the terms of RCWA 35.34.120, and setting the effective date. Move third and final.
Second.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornamond.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Kathy Layman.
Aye.
Michael Illaquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
I love you, Kathy. Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero. Agenda Bill 20674, an ordinance creating a new internal service fund for public works administration and engineering services.
Move third and final. Second.
Jack Weiss.
Aye.
Terry Bornamond.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Kathy Layman.
Aye.
Michael Illaquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
Ordinance passes seven zero.
Okay. With the deepest gratitude for allowing me to be of service to this outstanding community these last three years, I do hereby resign my position as Ward Three Representative of Bellingham City Council. One year early and pass my responsibilities as council president to President Pro Tem, Terry Bornamond.
Thank you, Kathy. With that, we are now adjourned.